Good evening, everyone. Looking to call to order the regular meeting of council Monday, June the 11th to order at 7:00 PM. Before we get to approval of the agenda, there are some minor changes, council, in part for the ordering and one item to remove. So with your indulgence, I would like to move Planning and Land Use, pardon me, TPI to follow Finance and Administration, which bumps Planning and Land Use down to 6.3. And also to remove item number 7.3 under bylaws as the subdivision has not yet been registered, so naming needs to come a little later.
Move approval of the agenda as amended, Your Worship?
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Public participation time, this is an opportunity, folks, for you in the audience, if there's anything that you would like to speak to council. Microphone is there, name and address, please.
I'm John Newton, and I'm representing 517-535-LATORIA ROAD. And we're the developers for the subdivision that is currently going on there. At our committee meeting, when we were here, there was a lot of confusion as to exactly what we were doing. And one of the things that was suggested was that we get a rendering done. We tried, we rushed to try and do that, but we couldn't get it in on last Thursday for you. And we had a package that we wanted to... Some people thought we were going to raise the lots by 11 meters. And so Kathy Duncan went and spoke to the neighbors for about two and a half hours and discussed various issues with them. I then, subsequent to that, met with one of the neighbors' representatives on the 27th of June. And we discussed what was happening, and I told her that we would get a rendering done. And I talked to her about issues, and they had some other issues that we kind of dealt with that really had nothing to do with our project. Anyways, I then sent them a package, or sent her a package, but unfortunately, she was out of town. So we had them delivered by our general superintendent, and he spoke with approximately seven people there and sort of clarified what was going on. The other seven weren't home. What our issue is, we are creating the lots on the site. They don't exist. So with staff, we've come to a way of measuring that is easy for the future inspectors who come and make sure that the height is not exceeded. So we're actually doing something that is lower than would be normal. In the situation we're in, we have the road up here, we have the lot level down here, and it's got a tight slope down. If we filled it a little farther in, we would average two elevations down here and two elevations up here, so the average height of that basement would be in the middle. And then we would easily measure up to the bylaw 8.5 meters. Because we're actually making it simple, we're measuring 400 below the basement elevation, which is down here, which adds to the height. So although we'll have a two-story home from the street, there will be, in some cases, a daylight basement on some of the lots, which makes it three stories. And you can see in the rendering that was actually copied for you, that you're only going to see two levels from... This is down in Pondside, in the middle of the subdivision, behind the house on Pondside where people have their patios. You won't see anything. You actually cannot see the top roof of the houses, those houses that are there. These are only on a few lots, and the lots right behind here, we're going to specify that they have to be flat roofed. We've also added a row of trees that we're going to put in our landscape covenant, these permadella trees that will form a hedge, and that was a request from Pondside. And that we will carry all the way down to our Lot 1, which will be along Latoria Road. And those lots are all going to be one-story from the road and two-story with a daylight basement. So the other lots that we are asking for the height variance on are actually internal to our site and won't be affected by anybody except for the homes on the site. And I think that's about it. There aren't any representatives that doesn't appear from Pondside, so I think we've answered their concerns as best we could anyways. And I'll leave it.
Thank you.
My name's Kathy Duncan, 543 Latoria, and this will probably be the last time I speak to council on this project, if there's any luck. Our variance that we're going forward with tonight, and hoping that we can be a little more articulate about breaking our site into two places. One being the cul-de-sac, and with the staff recommends, or the committee recommends, that it's a three-meter setback is fine, and it works in conjunction with John's adjacent subdivision and setbacks. But up at the top in the laneway, it's such a unique little 100-foot road, and with such a severe slope from the diminished building envelope up at the top, if we don't blast down and we try and build the house up on top, and the slope is here, and I put some photographs in the email and the letter that I wrote to council and mayor, and it's just an innovative way to cover the parking. So you're going to have a seven-meter driveway and a 2.15-meter setback from the front, so the building can cant over the seven-meter driveway. And we really believe that it's actually going to beautify the parking. It's not diminishing the parking, it's getting an extra meter of parking to it. But you won't see three, four vehicles stacked into the cul-de-sac or the laneway because the building itself is going to be canted over the parking, and then the double garage is beyond that. So it's a really unique opportunity to try something different that we really full-heartedly believe that will be used in the future towards preserving natural slopes and going up, not out, and less blasting. And Lot 8, after we explained it to Councilor Logan at the end of the committee, was that Lot 8 is actually a different setback due to the frontage. And if we don't use the 1.5 to give it a sort of one facade coming across and canting it over for the driveway, it's going to make it an awkward development, it's going to make it an awkward build. We can work with it, but it won't be as nice or as attractive if we can work within the sightlines that are there. And that was all prescribed way back when by Simon Lawrence, actually, and Will Piribum, I think 2006, 2007, as the design ideas. And so we're just here today trying to... Obviously, I wasn't very articulate last week when I was kind of trying to help the Pondside residents understand what we were doing with John's subdivision versus articulating the separated areas of ours. So we're not trying to be cheeky coming back, going against the committee recommends, but rather than point out maybe what I missed in presenting very articulately last time around a committee. Thank you.
Any other members of the public? Last and final chance. We shall move on to our agenda, folks. Mayor's message, just a resounding thank you to staff and council and residents for the successful second eats and beats. I've had nothing but accolades sent my way, even requesting another one soon. So Sandra's not here today, I'm sure she's taking a well-deserved evening of rest, but it has been, it was really a very well-received and well-done event. Anything else from council members as of recent in the last couple of weeks? Nothing? So I will just then move on and carry on with our agenda. We have adoption of minutes, two sets of minutes, regular meeting of council, June 27th, and June 8th, public hearing minutes.
Move adoption, Your Worship?
Second, please.
Second.
Counselor Day has a correction.
I do, if I can find where I made my note. It's on page four of the regular meeting of June 27th. It was noted, it's just above where it's at, number six. It was noted that the decking should be removed to be, it says retained, but it should say restained, it's just missing the "s" for clarity. That was about the bridge in Royal Bay. And then on the next page, page six, yeah, page six, there's just a little typo at the end of the sentence there, just a "t" stuck in there. That's my changes.
Thank you. With those changes, all those in favor? Posed, motion carried? Receive, please, a number of minutes. Report of public hearing, June 8th. Cycling Advisory Committee, April 4th. Pioneer Cemetery Board of Trustees, April 13th. Planning and Land Use Committee, June 7th. And Transportation and Public Infrastructure, June 6th. Move receipt.
Second.
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried? Correspondence, we have a letter before us, 5.1, from the administrator at West Shore Parks and Rec requesting a letter of support, enabling the accessibility fund grant application through Employment and Social Development Canada to increase accessibility for people with disabilities at the West Shore Parks and Recreation facilities by providing wider doors and automated door openers in public areas and replacing six to 10 curbs with proper disabled access dropdowns, and that council gives consent to renovations, construction, and retrofitting required for these projects. This is a project that has already been approved in their budget? I don't think so on this one, it's already a done deal.
Just checking.
Yeah. What they're clarifying is your ability to sit in as a member rep for that, but we're not approving more money, we're just simply providing a letter of support.
I'll move the recommendation for the letter of support.
Second.
And it's the second part, too, is giving consent to the renovations and whatever. Counselor Nault?
Just a question on the consent to renovation, construction, and retrofitting. I assume the building inspector will have some say in that?
It would be going through the normal process of renovating.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All those in favor? Posed, motion carries? A letter also from Robert Maxwell and Jack Marr, co-chairs of the Peninsula and Area Agricultural Commission, requesting a letter of support to reinstate and hire our South Island Regional Agrologist. They're looking that we send a letter of support to the Ministry of Agriculture and Premier Clark under my signature encouraging the hiring of a regional agrologist for the southern Vancouver Island to continue working with and providing valuable service and advice to the local farm and food community and local municipalities at no less than the current established standards. The other recommendation that we have is that the June 23rd letter be received.
I would move that we send a letter of support because the local farms on the peninsula are important to all of us.
Looking for a second or?
Second.
Any further discussion, comments? All those in favor? Posed, motion carries? Thirdly, a letter from Stephen Hunt, Director of USW United Steelworkers, District 3, Western Province and Territories, looking for a letter of support regarding old growth logging in the province's working force be received for information, or that staff be directed to contact the United Steelworkers to obtain more information related to old growth logging in the province's working force for consideration at a future committee or council meeting. All those in favor? Posed, motion carried? Finance and Administration, item 6.1, report from our acting director of finance. Staff.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. So after a bit of a whirlwind of getting through financial year-end, budget, tax notices out the door, and money in the door, we've turned our attention to giving you a bit of an update as to how things have gone for the first six months of the fiscal year. And I've given you a fair bit of information, perhaps more than you would like to see, but it is there. There is no quiz. I would like to draw your attention, though, to the first two pages, which are sort of the summaries, and I've given you a bit of a verbal update. So a couple of things I would like to draw your attention to are the revenue side of the picture. So at this time of the year, we've basically recorded all of our taxation revenues once the bills go out the door. And I just wanted to take a minute to give a major shout-out to our staff, who have been extremely busy for the last five to six weeks between the administrative and finance staffs. There's $25 million that has been collected, and this year, we've improved our collection rate so that people are paying on time, and about 94% on time, which is terrific. And more people are going online, not waiting in line, which is how I like to describe it, and we're happy to see more use of that. So we will continue to refine some of our processes there. So that's why you'll see that the taxation revenue is basically bang on budget. We still have to do some invoicing of our federal government properties, which are sometimes called PILT or Payment in Lieu of Taxes. And I have a meeting scheduled between the provincial reps and federal reps to make sure that the way BC Assessment is assessing those properties drives with how the federal reps see it, because we've had a few issues over the years on that, and I'm planning on setting some groundwork and perhaps some ground rules so that they will communicate with each other and not leave us basically in the middle of disagreements over how they appraise properties. So those invoices will be going out in the next week or two. On the... Let me just see here, there's some of the things when we are just getting ramped up to get busy on our various special projects and capital asset additions, staff are very busy now just implementing those, and we'll be bringing a report back to council in the fall, once we've sort of got things more underway. You know, visible to community members right now is the construction of the Painter Trail, as an example. And I know that behind the scenes, our director of engineering and his deputy have been working very hard on a number of engineering projects. So we bring back a separate report on that. The revenue that we have budgeted this year for permits, for licenses, and for fees, we upped those figures this year at budget. And in some departments, notably in our planning department, they have already achieved the full budget. That's how busy things are. And I want to draw council's attention to that because when our planning department is that busy, they often see the beginning of various developments. And we are also seeing significant increases even over and above what we have budgeted for our building permits and licenses and fees. So if people think they're busy, they are. We've got the figures that are bearing that out, and it's kind of exciting because we did a lot of work at budget this year to look at the various developments that were happening and to try to put some figures and projections around that. So that's just kind of a high level on that one. I'm still on page one of the summary, just to give you just a bit of an overview. Debt proceeds, as you know, we have now realized the borrowing on the Callwood Central, so that project will be going forward later this year. And on page two of the summary, which is our expenditures, most of our departments are very close to where they should be in terms of budget, and there's a few areas where we may have had to pay the third quarter, say, to West Shore Parks and Rec at the beginning of the month, and you'll see that that has made things look a little bit skewed. But everything is looking pretty good there. Some of the things that we have to collect for and pay for, such as our sewer fees to the CRD, we have to pay that all at once, along with the different remittances. So just to remind council, when the various millions of dollars come in the door, we keep about 50% of that. And so right now, staff are just in the process of cutting very large checks to the CRD, to the hospital district, because there's about $12 million that we collect on their behalf. And in another life, I'm going to come back and see if we can't collect a commission on that, because it always amazes me, it's a great deal of effort, and legally, we are not allowed to collect a commission on that taxation, which we've collected. So we're just now making sure that our various partner agencies receive their share of the taxation revenues. Is there any questions on that? I don't want to go through all of this in gory detail, but I wanted to just hit on some of the things that are driving the numbers and the things that will continue to drive it. In the... So the first six months, we get the taxation revenues recorded, we get the taxes collected, and right now, I know that staff are very busy in the other departments getting their various projects and that off the ground. And I think I've tried to highlight some of the areas where we've seen some differences. I have to give a major thank you to my deputy, Jen, who has done a lot of work in pulling these numbers together. I've gone through and given you some comments in the other 15 pages, just to ensure that you've got a bit of background. I don't think I'll go through all that, but you know where my office is, you know how to contact me if you have any questions, or if you have any now, be happy to field them.
Open it to council, any questions for our director?
Move receipt, have the report, Your Worship?
Second.
And just before I call the vote, I just want to say, Andrea, thank you so much to all of finance, because they have been hard at work. We've just been one sector after another in there to get this all together.
Thank you very much, and also a shout-out to the admin staff. We've had a very good joint team effort this year, and very appreciative.
The cross-training stuff is paying off. All those in favor? Posed, motion carried? This is where we jump, folks, to TPI portion of the agenda. So in your paper copy, 6.3 is now 6.2. 6.2.1, recommendation, request to place artificial turf on City Boulevard at 3396 Rockwood Terrace. Counselor Nault, are we leading introduction?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City received a request to replace the vegetation on the City Boulevard in front of this property with artificial turf. Had some lively discussion. Committee felt that that was something that we didn't really want to see the city start down the road to, so the recommendation was that... We instruct this to continue on a... I'm sorry, the motion to allow it was defeated, and the motion finally moved was that the council instruct staff that artificial turf should not be in approved surfacing on City Boulevards in the new subdivision and development of land bylaw. And I would so move.
And seconded, comments, questions, Counselor Day?
I just want to clarify, the reason that I am not in support of artificial turf on the boulevards is because we've had this request before, and because I have personally witnessed through the winter time with snow removal, when sometimes the boundaries between the roadways and the sidewalks and the boulevards are hard to place, and snow removal equipment has accidentally removed turf, regular turf from the boulevards, it's taken a long time to rehabilitate that afterwards. I think that it doesn't do anything for the birds, or the bees, or anything else to have artificial turf either, and I think the potential liabilities are large. Because we've turned it down before, when we were asked, I think we should continue to turn that down and come up with more resilient... There's lots of resilient plantings that could be employed if grass is not going to be successful in a particular location.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counselor Logan?
Thank you, Worship. I won't be supporting this motion. We have approved artificial turf previously in Royal Bay, it looks attractive. If the city isn't in a position to maintain the boulevards in an attractive way, then we should offer the residents another option. And so we see plenty of boulevards that are not watered or maintained, and they look brutal. So until we have some other policy in terms of use for boulevards, like food plantings or whatever that's occurring in other municipalities, then, you know, I think... Or if we're, unless we're willing to start maintaining boulevards, like I maintain my... The city's redaway, and I water, and it looks attractive. I take that on, take responsibility, but if these separated boulevards are not maintained by the city, then we should give the residents an option. I think where it has been laid down, it's been attractive, it's been effective, and, you know, we haven't had snow for a couple of years, and climate change probably dictates that we may not see a lot of snow in the coming years. So, you know, I think that's less of a worry for me, quite frankly, so I'm happy to approve it. I think it reflects positively.
Thank you, Counselor Nault, and then Counselor Chong.
This did follow the committee's discussion, and there are many options residents can use if they don't like grass on the City Boulevard. There's rock gardens, there's drug-tolerant plants, many, many treatments. My backyard has been a Gary Oak Meadow since I moved in over 25 years ago, and we never water that. It looks marvelous in the springtime, a little bit brown in the summertime, but artificial turf is artificially green 12 months of the year, and in my opinion, a hideous land treatment. And it also contributes to urban heating, because it's a heat sink, it doesn't help cool the way plants do. So there are many options besides artificial turf that the residents could be applying. Artificial turf would be my absolute last choice.
Counselor Chong?
Thank you, Your Worship. I will be supporting the motion tonight for the reasons that I do believe there are numerous alternatives as well. I want to echo the point Counselor Day made, that environmentally, it does nothing. I think there are many alternatives that can do something for birds, animals, bugs, anything, so I think artificial turf is probably the last option I'd want to see.
Thank you, and I will weigh in to say, I'm caught with the applicant is indicated that they are themselves putting in artificial turf on the rest of their property, so it would be incongruent to have something wildly different in that front area. So as has been indicated in here, that a license of occupation be in there additionally so that it remains the homeowner residence responsibility for any repairs and upkeep, I will not support the recommendation that is before us, but would consider something different. So...
Any other further comments? Counselor Day?
I would just add that although the homeowner is responsible for their little section, it would be the only little section of the road that would have the artificial turf. It would be, you know, boulevard maintained by the neighborhood, most likely not artificial turf, and then a patch of artificial turf, and then back to something else again. So I hope that perhaps there is a compromise that does allow something to grow there. There's lots of things that don't even require mowing, like connect and act.
Called question, all those in favor? Posed? Motion is carried? One more item under TPI, and that is 6.2.2, report from city engineer, request to connect Horizon Terrace in Langford to Callwood Sewers?
Thank you, I think I'll refer this one to the engineer, it's a fairly complicated run-in.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, I think I'll refer this one to the engineer, it's a fairly complicated run in. So this is a request for the city of Callwood to provide sewer service from a property on the other side of the boundary with Langford. And there have already been a number of instances like this. The Brittany in Callwood is serviced from sewers in Langford. The Royal Callwood Golf Course is serviced from sewers in Langford. And there is an existing agreement in place, although it hasn't been implemented, for Olympic View Golf Club residential development, commercial development to be serviced by sewers in Callwood. So they have gone both ways. And this would be the first one to be actually implemented, that is coming from Langford to Callwood. It's a little bit different from the others in that the, there is no Langford City right of way or land that is crossed by the sewer from the strata. And because of this, it's, we can just have a, an agreement between Callwood and the strata, and between Langford and the strata, and we don't need an agreement between Callwood and Langford. The only legal requirement between the two municipalities is that the city of Langford agree to this supply of service from another municipality. And that is incorporated into their agreement with the strata. Where part of their, what they agree to do for the strata is to agree that that service be provided from the other side of the border. So it's a relatively simple one compared to the others. And the city solicitors have written both agreements, both the one for Langford and the one for Callwood, with Callwood and Langford paying their separate share of the bill. That way, we know these two agreements work together. And the, there's a map attached to the report, so that you can, one with just lot and road line work and one with the aerial photographs, so you can get a good idea of where Horizon Terrace is. And we have allowed in the agreement for the strata to be serviced from either Sewell Road, Cladet Court, or Sun Heights Drive, in order to give them freedom, because they are going to have to negotiate passage over private property to get to either, any of those roads. And as far as Callwood's concerned, it doesn't make any difference which they choose. I believe they have one in mind, but as I say, it's just easier to give them the freedom. The agreement is also attached, the draft agreement. We believe it's 99% complete at this stage. And Langford is just running their agreement by Corix. We don't think any changes that Corix might require would affect our agreement. So we anticipate that this agreement would go through almost exactly as worded. Might, just allowing for somebody catching some incorrect spelling or something like that at this late stage in the final review. I have set out in the report what the purpose of the main clauses of the agreement are. But basically, the intent is that there be no cost to the city of Callwood other than some staff time so far in, in setting this up and working with the solicitors. And we have even included an administration fee on top of what would be the normally paid fees and the equivalent of the normally paid taxes to our sewer utility. So the options are either to instruct staff to complete the final review of the proposed agreement with the proponents and the city's legal council, and providing there are no substantive changes as a result, authorize the mayor and CIO to sign the agreement. And of course, that would be signed the agreement once the solicitors have approved it. And the other option is decline to assist Langford in providing sewer service to the development at Horizon Terrace in Langford. One thing I should emphasize out of all of the points in the agreement is that this is a temporary thing. So even though the, the local area service that they will be feeding into has the advantage of the lots on the strata will have to pay their version of the capital enhancement, capacity enhancement fee, because we can't allow anybody in without paying for that extra capacity. They, under the terms of this agreement, they would eventually withdraw that sewage and put it into a Call, into a Langford sewer. And therefore, that capacity would in fact be available to somebody else. But rather reduce the cost that, that the city eventually has to pay to expand the capacity of the sewer. But as always with these things, there's no absolute guarantee, it's, it's temporary. Because once we've provided the service, despite the fact that we've provided for this to expire at the end of 21 years as required by the law, I'm sure that everybody will look at it 21 years from now, and if Langford hasn't managed to get a sewer up to that point, they'll say, well, we better extend it for a while. But certainly, the intent is, Langford's intent and the agreement's intent is that eventually there will be service from the Langford side. So the recommendation is that council instruct staff to complete the final agreement of the, final review of the proposed agreement with the Horizon Terrace strata in Langford, and review by the city's legal council. And providing there are no substantive changes as a result, council, council authorizes the mayor and chief administrative officer to sign the agreement to provide sewer service to the strata. And I should change that to, to the strata at Horizon Terrace in Langford, because we do like these resolutions to actually state what they're talking about. Thank you.
Counselor Day?
Thank you, just a question. I do understand there's a, a number of homes in the, in that area. Batting Place comes to mind, where I've talked to residents. And I'm not sure if they're in Langford and coming to Callwood Sewers, or they're in Callwood and going to Langford Sewers. But I have spoken with residents in the area. My question though is, it's been a big concern in the past as to the cost to provide sewers to some locations in, in Callwood. And what contribution would this strata be making to, towards the original cost that was incurred to build those sewers?
The, the same contribution that anybody else in Callwood joining would pay, which is actually paying for their own capacity to be created in the future, so that those that were originally in the LAS still have access to the full capacity that they had anticipated.
Thank you. Any other comments? Question to staff? If Langford puts a sewer in there, are they obligated to switch over to that one then, or?
Yeah, it actually, there's a clause in the agreement that says that one year after there's a sewer available, we cut it off. And they do have to build a valve into the connection, so we can just turn it off.
Well, I noted that it said shut off if it was lack of payment, but that's good to hear on that one too. Anyone else? I need a recommendation and, and
I'll move the recommendation, your worship, with a few additional words that the city engineer suggested.
Any further conversation? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries? Thank you. We'll move back, please, then to Planning and Land Use Committee, item number 6.3.1. Recommendation DVP permit 16006 for 517 and 535 Latoria Road.
Thank you, worship. Here, the applicant is requesting the very section, section of the land use bylaw to increase the height of a permitted structure for lots 6 and 7 from 8.5 meters to 10.5 meters. And from 8 meters to, 8.5 meters to 11 meters for lots 8 through 16, along with a request to reduce the front yard setback for lots 28, 30 from 4.5 meters to 3 meters, in order to develop, to develop 30 lots as phase 1 of a 59 lot subdivision. The lots will be flat terrace building sites, similar to those on Pelican Drive, that the majority of the development will, will consist of two-story homes, that the first five lots approaching from Latoria Road will actually feature single-story structures, with three-story structures proposed for internal road B, and two-story structures proposed for internal road C. John Newton explained that lots 1 to 5 are similar in design to the Pelican Drive development, that it will appear as one level off the street and two levels in the front. And as you travel up the road, only the top floor should be visible. That larger lots 6 and 7 have a 10-foot drop from the roadway and will appear as two stories from the curb, designed with daylight basements and preferred flat roofs. And that only the top floor of the structures built on lots 8 and 9 will be visible from Ponside. The planner explained that if the structures were to be built in compliance with the current zoning, they would most likely consist of a basement and one upper level. Planner also explained that the footprint of the structure is to be sited closer to the road, and the front setback variance is intended to mitigate the necessity for retaining walls and blasting, but thus reducing the impact on adjacent lots. We had, we had a hell of a time trying to rationalize the variance that's requested, because at the end of the day, there is actually no increase in the height of the building, which was a concern from Ponside neighbors, and rightly so. And so we talked back and forth, and actually, one of our committee members had, had done a drawing of, of what the structure, what the height would look like with no variance, and what the height would look like with a variance, and the reason for the variance. And essentially, the reason for the variance is because the, where, where the height is measured from with no variance, if you have half of the, you know, if you have, I think it was explained by John, you got the road and you got half the, the lot filled at the bottom. The variance is measured from three separate points, and there's an average taken. Whereas if it's totally excavated, the height is actually measured from, from very bottom, if I'm explaining this correctly. Thus, there's the appearance that there's additional height for the structure, when really, there, there isn't. So once that, once the illustration was shown to, to committee and to, to the residents, I think it, it brought everything into perspective. Also, what was nice about the what's nice about the, the other variance is that the houses particularly along Ponside are actually moving away from Ponside and closer to the road, thus reducing the impact on, on Ponside. So it was recommended by committee and ISO move, and Counselor Day has asked that I actually break these up into, into two separate motions. So I will, I'm just trying to figure out which, is it A and B? Okay. I'll move that it was recommended by committee and ISO move that development variance permit number DVP 16-006 be authorized for issuance, which would have the effect of varying A, relaxation of height pursuant to section 10.13.4 of the land use bylaw, from 8.5 meters to 10.5 meters on lots 6 and 7, and to 11 meters on lots 8 through 16 and lot 21, in accordance with the benchmark elevations contained in appendix 2 of the staff report dated June the 9th, 2016. That would be one motion.
Seconder, please?
Second.
Any discussion on this one motion? Counselor Day?
I just want to be clear that the reason I'm not supporting the relaxation of the height is that the difference is perceived by the neighborhood, at least in, in my estimation, to be somewhat different in, in terms of the height. And that there, I do share the, the community's concern, not that their backyards will be overlooked, because I think that's, you know, it's unlikely. People are not going to come right out to the edge of the wall to look down onto the neighbors. But I think from driving along Latoria Boulevard, I think you will notice a taller home.
Any further conversation? All those in favor? Opposed? The motion carries?
Your worship, the second part of the motion is an ISO move that relaxa, relaxation of frontier, front setbacks pursuant to section 10.13.4 of the land use bylaw number 151 from 4.5 meters to 3.0 meters on lots 28 to 30, subject to, and subject to a minimum driveway length of 7.0 meters measured from garage door to either back of sidewalk or back of curb, whichever is closer to the front property line. And B, the form and character of the dwellings on lots 8, 16, and 21 shall be designed to minimize impact of the height to the satisfaction of the director planning prior to the issuance of a building permit.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries? Item 6.3.2, recommendation DVP permit number 16007 for 543 Latoria Road.
Thank you, worship. Here, the applicant is requesting to vary the land use bylaw, which increasing the height from 8.5 meters to 11 meters for lots 4 to 7, and 9 to 11, and from lots 8, 16, and lot 21, and to reduce the front setback from 4.5 meters to 3.0 meters for lot 1, from 4.5 to 3.0 for lots 1.1 to 7, and 9 to 11, and from 4.5 to 1.5 meters for lot 8, in order to develop an 11 lot subdivision in conjunction with the development of the adjacent properties located at 517 and 535 Latoria Road. Staff are concerned about the request to vary, to reduce the front yard setbacks, particularly those less than 2.15 meters and 1.5 meters, feeling that there is potential for crowding of the street, and recommended that the third story of the, of the dwellings be set back a minimum of 3 meters. Committee did have a fair amount of discussion on this particular item, and it was felt that there, there needed to be some consistency in terms of setback, and was satisfied with 3 meters, as has been requested by the developments neighboring properties. And before I make a recommendation, perhaps I will turn it over to staff, just following up on the, on the presentation we had earlier.
Thank you, Counselor Logan. I'd just like to bring to council's attention a letter that's been provided to council from Ms. Duncan, that's attached on page 85 of the agenda package. This outlines a, basically, a response to the committee's recommendation to not recommend the reduced setbacks on lots 1, or excuse me, from, on lots 9 through 11, and on a lot 8. And Ms. Duncan is asking that council reconsider the variance request such that the front setbacks pursuant to section 10.14.4 of the land use bylaw number 151 be varied from 4.5 meters to 3 meters on be varied from 4.5 meters to three meters on lots one through seven. And this is the addition. And that it be reduced to 2.15 meters on lots nine through 11 and one, down to 1.5 meters on lot eight. The second page of, or excuse me, the third page of Ms. Duncan's letter shows the lot plan on page 87 of 124. With those, those areas, she's asking for reconsideration, showing in orange. Thank you.
Uh, Your Worship, to get the discussion started amongst council, I will move the recommendation by, that was made by committee.
Second.
Discussion, council? Counselor Day?
I have to say that I do have some concerns and I, I understand that Ms. Duncan is trying to work with a, a challenging site. But, but having, you know, front yard setbacks as low as, as three meters is going a long way for me. And it was in keeping with the other development adjacent. And variances that were granted there that led us to going as far as three meters. So looking at 2.15 for lots nine to 11 and 1.5 for lot eight. I feel that, that's going to bring those buildings very, very close to the roadway. And it's going to, it's going to be a challenging roadway as it is for, for parking with the, I'm trying to remember. It's lot eight that has a tandem parking spot of only 11.5 meters. So it is still difficult to, to park two vehicles in 11.5 meters. And I think that those two things combined, houses being very close to the road and parking being tight is going to be less than attractive.
Any other members of council? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Moving through to next item. 6.3.3 Recommendation subdivision application number, or application 517, 535 and 543 Latoria Road.
Thank you, Worship. At our, a couple of meetings ago, the approving officer made a visit and informed the members that in 2007 and 2008, the properties at 517 and 535 and 543, the Latoria Road were rezoned. And that at the time, standard building schemes were included as schedules to the development agreement covenants. The approving officer explained that the practice was to include the city as a signing party and the covenants were registered against the subject properties. But since then, the city has discontinued the practice of adding building scheme criteria for sing, single-family developments and covenants. As now there's the opportunity with a renewal of preliminary lot layout assessments or PLA's previously issued by the approving officer to include as a condition of subdivision approval. A requirement that the subdivision design code provisions contained in the original development agreement covenants be removed from those documents. And that such provisions can be registered instead as private building scheme covenants to be administered solely by the developers. This, by removing the city, it would be consistent with what we've done recently with other projects that have been a challenge for us to administer. It was recommended by committee and ISO move, I won't go and read the full motion before us, the recommendation, but I will move it.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? 6.3.4 DVP permit 16-010 for 466 Pelican Drive.
Thank you, Worship. In this one, the applicant is requesting again to vary the land use bylaw to permit parking to be sited in the front yard in order to accommodate an off-street parking area for a proposed newly constructed single-family dwelling with a secondary suite. The Royal Bay comprehends a development two zoning permit, secondary suite parking in the front yard. And that staff support the proposal because it precludes the necessity to construct a retaining wall in the front of the yard. So essentially if, if we wanted, we required them to, to build parking for a secondary suite on the side of the house, which occurs in, in most new homes these days. The applicant would be having to build a huge retaining wall in an area that is, has been quite vocal about retaining walls. And it really would have had an impact on the surrounding environment. So the applicant here recognizes the challenges and is sensitive to the impact on the neighborhood and, and the environment. And wishes to have that third parking spot sited in front rather than on the side. So it was recommended by committee and ISO move the recommendation that's before us.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Finally, in Planning and Land Use, item 6.3.6, or pardon me, not finally, we're at 333 Whale Road. DVP 16-011.
Thank you, Worship. Good news story, another development in the Callwood Corner area, 333 Whale Road. The applicant is requesting to vary section four of the sign bylaw, increasing the maximum permitted sign area from 1.5 to 8.9 square meters in order to permit the erecting of two temporary free standing development marketing signs, each measuring 2.4 by 3.6 meters. The planner concluded that the signs will be erected on the frontage of the property, advertising a proposed new development. And that the applicant has indicated the signs will remain for a maximum of two years while the project is under construction. But staff is recommending, recommending the inclusion of a condition that the signs be removed on or before two years from the issuance of the development variance permit. Committee had, had some good discussion about the size. I think generally the committee was supportive of some variance to, to the size. However, was not comfortable with the, the size that the applicant was requesting. So after discussion, we came up with the recommendation before us, which essentially is the sign would be essentially the size of a sheet of plywood. And it was seen by committee as a good compromise and something that would fulfill the needs of the, the applicant in being able to, to market their, their new development. So it was recommended by committee and ISO move the recommendation before us. So essentially, the two temporary signs would be increased from 1.5 square meters to 3.0 square meters each.
Discussion? Counselor Noll?
Yes, I like the fact that the committee reduced the, requested the size sign down to a more manageable size. And I especially like the proviso that they be removed within two years. We should do that with all of our signs.
Counselor Day?
Thanks. I just wanted to say that I think that where the signs are also has to be taken into account. This is kind of our up and coming downtown core with our new hotel there. And, you know, it's a different type of road than some of the other roads. There was some comparisons that were made to along Suk Road where some larger signs have been in place for a while for another development. And I do also agree that the timeframe is, is really useful. It'd be much better, I think, to have, you know, a second application or an extension rather than have a sign up that is out of date.
Thank you. Any others? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Finally, now in Planning Memorandum on 291 Portsmouth Drive, rezoning clarification to allow density bonusing. Resoning 16-002.
Thank you, Worship. As council may recall, a direction was given to staff to prepare a bylaw that would rezone 219, excuse me, 291 Portsmouth Drive from the R1 zone to the R4 zone to allow for the creation of two new lots from the single parent parcel. Since this time, staff had determined that after taking legal due diligence, it would be preferable from a technical bylaw standpoint that the subject property be considered for rezoning to a modified R1 zone instead of the originally proposed R4 zone. This change would not affect the development potential or the potential impacts of the proposed rezoning and associated subdivision. Therefore, staff recommend that the memo titled 291 Portsmouth Drive rezoning clarification to allow density bonusing dated July 6th, 2016 be received for information. And that staff be directed to include the draft rezoning amendment bylaw revised wording as per section two of staff's memo. And lastly, that density bonusing provisions be included in a new subsection of the draft amendment bylaw also as outlined in staff's recommendation. Thank you.
So moved?
Second or? Discussion, Counselor Day?
Just one question in that is, would this have any impact on other homes with the existing R1 zoning?
No, we've identified no real world impacts to this change. It's simply a, it's a bylaw wording, technical issue.
All good? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? And with that, we get to move into bylaws. I see we have a lone member. I'm just looking to see. Are you feeling lonely? Oh, you're first up anyway, so you're okay. Bylaw section 7.1, bylaw number 1597 for final reading. Can I, no, can I just go to staff just prior, prior to the movement, please?
Thank you, Worship. Council may recall that as a condition of a fourth reading, a development agreement in the form of section 219 covenant was to be registered. That outlined provisions for payment for municipal services by the, the property owners and owners of the proposed Dwight Boarding School. That, there's two separate agreements that apply to the two separate properties in this case. The city and the applicants have agreed to terms, executed the documents, and I understand they've been deposited at land titles office. Apparently there's been some news late this afternoon. I just ask representative of Dwight School, Mr. Spinner, do you? Thank you, Mr. Spinner. So normally staff requires written confirmation from land titles that this has taken place. We have not received that yet. So in this case, we would be, council, if they chose to give fourth reading, we wouldn't have the normal process of confirming that registration with land titles. If council saw fit to give final reading to this bylaw, there would be the option of the mayor recalling council to reconsider the vote within 30 days of, of today's date. So that's one option under local governing act in, in cases like this. Thank you.
And I will say that we were, as pointed out earlier from our director of admin, we were challenged with our email systems. Pretty much full day today for getting any things in and out. So I'm fully prepared to recall council within the 30 day if this doesn't follow up. If council chooses to go forward with the fourth reading, final reading. So with that, I will leave it up to Counselor Logan.
I'll move final reading, Your Worship.
Discussion, council? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried and if required, we'll be back. Thank you. Item 7.2, bylaw number 1626, first and second readings only for Callwood Land Use, bylaw number 151, 1989 amendment for 291 Portsmouth.
Move introduction, Your Worship?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move second.
Second, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? And the final bylaw before us, there at 7.3 was removed. So we are at the end and conclusion of our meeting. And just before we do, I just want to say council have a wonderful summer, staff. I hope you can live without us for the next six weeks while you, you know, play catch-up. And we're going to come back all energized and renewed. And with that.
Move adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.